Well, greetings everyone. We have only the presenter and myself here in the actual live session, but I know that this will be used by a number of people in recordings. I know that a number of schools are actually planning to use these recordings for professional development activities within their school over the upcoming days, weeks, and months. So I want to welcome you all to the last presentation of the first day of the 2011 Online Conference on 21st Century Lutheran Education. Tonight here to finish off our evening, we have Dr. Richard Zilee, who has gone through some really an interesting journey here in the recent past. And he's going to share on how he won a seat on Michigan's State Board of Education. And I'm excited to hear not only about how he did it, but if he's willing to share a little bit about why he did it as well, that would be fascinating for us. So I'm going to stop speaking and just give Dr. Zilee the floor, and we'll see what he has to say for us.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bull. It's an honor to be part of this conference and to share some of my experience with other Lutheran teachers, educators, and leaders in other states. My talk today is how I won my seat on Michigan's State Board of Education. I was privileged to be elected in the fall of 2010. And in Michigan, when you're elected to a statewide office, you are given the title "The Honorable," hence the title there. I'll admit to a little personal vanity. I enjoy collecting titles, so I've got a whole bunch of them there for now. I'll start with a little bit of my background. I grew up in Detroit, and my life was changed by attending Lutheran High School West. It was wonderful to have teachers who shared the faith. And while at church, I was really an outcast and a loner and didn't get along with anyone. At Lutheran High, I found peers who shared the faith and some of my seriousness. And my interest in politics back then was demonstrated in the fact that I was elected student body president my senior year. My pastor back home could not believe it. And I conceived then the notion of going to college to study law and become a politician. My mother said, "No, no, you want to be a statesman, not a politician." So I had that interest in politics. Later, I went to Valparaiso University during the Seminex years and found that the church could be as political as any other institution. And furthermore, I became aware of the need for pastors who actually believed the Word of God is printed in the Scriptures. And I was led to prepare for the pastoral ministry. But I was always interested in education and thought to combine those two areas, which I subsequently did. After sojourning in different states and my four children born in other states, we finally took a call back to Detroit where there were babysitters. And I worked in Lutheran schools in Detroit during the decades of demographic decline. And my career coincided with the closing of 25 Lutheran schools in the city and a number of others on the outskirts. When life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. And I wrote a doctoral dissertation on when Lutheran schools close for the Detroit Ecumenical Theological Seminary. My personal fortunes were very good. My four children, which were the center of my life, I read to them every night for 20 years. And then they all grew up and went to four different states: Connecticut, New York, Hawaii, and Arizona. My wife's career took off, becoming principal of a charter school that I had helped organize and working for Central Michigan's Charter School Center. And this betokened a lifestyle change, which allowed time for other interests. And I became interested in local politics, partly because as a Republican, I wondered why there was never anyone to vote for on my ballot in Detroit. So I got involved as a precinct delegate. I got involved with the congressional--Freddian slipped there--Congressional District Committee. And most of you will find that this is the backbone of the Democratic and Republican Parties in the United States. There are many different organizations, and some are very active and influential. But the actual backbone of the party that sends delegates to state and national conventions are the Congressional District Committees. This committee reminded me an awful lot of a congregation. There were a lot of people who knew each other, went way back, and just as in a congregation, you don't discuss theology very much. So to my surprise, in the Republican Committee, we didn't discuss politics or political theory all that much. Outside the meetings, you might share a beer and share some ideas with people, but the meetings themselves were more friendly people working together to get something done rather than discussing ideas. So many of the skills that I had attained in working with a congregation could be applied in this setting as well. I live in a 93% registered Democratic district, and it was very hard to find people to run for state representative. And so I volunteered to put my name on the ballot. My wife, who was working with the charter school in the district, was very leery of my getting involved in politics. For some reason, she thought I might say something that would arouse a community and make her job difficult. So I proceeded slowly. And after three times as a candidate in our district, and the third time doing a little more work, appearing at--talking to groups and things of that nature, I wanted to get serious. And I looked for a race that I might actually have a chance at winning. My local race was obviously not going to work. And in 2006, at the state committee, I met a woman who was campaigning for reelection to the State Board of Education. And she didn't realize it then, but she had a great influence on me, partly because of her enthusiasm for her work. She shared with me the excitement of dealing with policies that affect so many children and their families in Michigan and the high stakes there. And really started thinking about that the next two years. So, two years later, I decided to make a run for it. I talked to my committee chairman, who was supportive, and he gave me some coaching. I had to overcome my native shyness and talk to people. People can be very skeptical if you want to run for an office, especially statewide office. So you have to believe in yourself, and that can take some practice to get comfortable From January through August, I participated in what is sometimes called the Rubber Chicken Circuit. No one ever called it that locally, but traditionally, that's what it's been called. You go basically to affairs where you eat and you get a chance to talk. And that's right up my alley. So I enjoyed these affairs very much. Furthermore, I met a lot of people from all walks of life: people who are working-class individuals, folks out of work, some young and enthusiastic, many old and retired. And this tends to be dominated by people who have time on their hands: people like myself, whose children had left the home, and those who were retired. As I say, this was a lot of fun, and being used to preaching and talking to groups, that came naturally to me as well. You get to know people. Usually, I was given two or three minutes to speak. So I had to make my point, introduce who I was, something, some one thing that people could remember about me, to gain some credibility and to make them think that I might be a good candidate. And again, I was fairly successful in this. When the state convention rolled around in August, there was three of us being nominated for the two offices. The one woman was nominated at the last minute by the teachers' unions. And it was fairly clear that she was not going to win on the floor. And to avoid embarrassment, she was talked into withdrawing and endorsing the two of us, who were the front runners at that point. Part of the adventure was addressing the convention of 3,000 or 4,000 people for the two minutes. I got to throw out the jokes that I never tell during sermons, and that was pretty exciting. And it was very gratifying, because no one was more surprised than my wife that I actually got this nomination. So that was very gratifying, as I say. Now, that was the year that President Obama was nominated, and it was very clear that the Democrats were going to carry Michigan. So it was running uphill. Furthermore, the two Democrat incumbents on the State Board of Education were fairly-- had been in place for a long time and had strong support from the teachers' unions. And it was fairly clear that I would not win, especially when Senator McCain withdrew from Michigan and let everybody know. That made it fairly clear that the other delegates, the other candidates for statewide and local offices would be hurt. It would have been better if Senator McCain had simply withdrawn and not told anybody, because when the name, the top of the ticket, does this publicly, then people don't turn out, and the local candidates suffer. That election ended with my getting about 44, 45% of the vote. So the two Democratic incumbents won pretty decisively. I had spent about $3,000 of my own money. I had done a couple of fundraisers, which barely broke even. So that was a lot of work, and I got some publicity out of it, but didn't raise a lot I had privately thought at the end of that it was fun, but I really couldn't afford to put that much money into it again. I learned a lot, though, from that race. And this is what I learned: I learned that politicians are nice people, especially on the Rubber Chicken Circuit. You'd go there, and there'd be candidates for governor, for senator, for secretary of state, and in local offices: state representative, state senator, and of course, dog catcher and county drain commissioner and things like this. And by and large, they are such nice people. They have great people skills. It's not surprising when you think about it. But it was really very pleasant to--especially after a couple of these, you get to recognize people, and they greet you warmly, and they had a genuine interest, a genuine concern for people, concerned to do a good job. The other striking characteristic of politicians is that they are very hardworking. If you hold an office, the political stuff you do has to be after hours. And if you're trying to campaign for an office, you have to make up for the fact that you don't have the name recognition and the free publicity that office holders have. So you have to put in even more time to get around and meet people, because name recognition and winning their confidence is major part of the battle. And I met a number of people who were sincerely concerned about the time that they spent away from their families and appreciation, sincere appreciation, for supportive spouses who did not get a lot of their time and attention during the campaign season. I further learned from this race the genius of the American political system. And this is the heart of my sharing with you. I would like all of us to appreciate our American political system. And here it is: everyone has their say, everyone can vote, but in this process, the people who care enough to be informed have the most influence. These are the people that turn out to these Rubber Chicken events: the people who meet the candidates, who are very concerned about certain issues on the Democratic side. It's probably affirmative action. On the Republican side, it's pro-life concerns, at least here in Michigan. And these are the people that come out and they screen the candidates. So these are the ones who have cared enough to inform themselves about the issues and where you, the candidate, stand. And these are the ones that recommend candidates and positions to their friends and families. Now, if you're this kind of person, I think you know what I'm talking about. I said before that I was always interested in politics. I watched the presidential nominating conventions, both Democratic and Republican, like most people watch the World Series. I wanted to catch every speech that I could from the nominations and the political personalities and the office holders and the aspirants and so on and so forth. And if you're that kind of person, your family, your friends probably know it. And so when they're not sure who to vote for, they know they can get an opinion from you, because you care enough to be informed. And there is a certain justice, a certain rightness in our system where the people who care enough to be informed have the most influence. The bottom line for us is to get involved. Most of the world's decisions are made by those who just show up. And that's why, to get a nomination, you go to meetings of people who are interested and concerned. And these are the people who choose the delegates that go to the state convention and do the I also learned that Missouri Synod Lutherans are culturally biased against politics. And I'm sharing from my own heart here: you know, we value right and certainty versus compromise and uncertainty. That's certainly my personality profile. But politics is not the art of what's absolutely right. It's the art of what's possible. It's somehow bridging the gap between people who disagree as to the ultimate right and certainty. So the compromise that is necessary, and especially the uncertainty: will this policy have the results we hope it will have? This is one reason why many of us instinctively are suspicious of politics and what politicians say. Furthermore, we detest self-promotion and superficiality. And to get ahead in politics, you need a measure of self-promotion. You need to be able to thrust yourself out, introduce yourself, shake people's hands, and convince them, as well as yourself, that you would be a good candidate for a specific office. And because you have to appeal to different kinds of people, different cultures, different ages, different backgrounds, it may appear superficial at times. Because the areas of agreement may only be superficial. They like the way you look and the fact that you were friendly, so they'll vote for you. And I would not consider that a sufficient reason to vote for someone, but many people do. And you have to win those votes, as well as the principled voters, in order to win an election. Another reason we--Missouri Synod folks are culturally biased against politics is that we confuse levels of discourse. And what I mean is, I have reasons for voting, and you have reasons, perhaps conflicting reasons. You hear many Christians say they oppose abortion because God says to. Well, you know, strictly speaking, the Bible doesn't address abortion directly. The Bible doesn't say that life begins at conception. The Bible doesn't know anything of conception, per se. It's the scientists who've told us that life begins at conception. And we apply not only the biblical truth, but also the civil truth, that life deserves protection at every stage, at every age. That has a claim on all Americans, whether they're Christians or not. And when addressing a Christian group, we can appeal to our shared belief in the Bible and in the God who gave His Son to die for us. But in appealing to the public at large, one should appeal, one should be aware of a different level of discourse, an appeal to what we have in common, as opposed to an appeal to strictly sectarian issues. The appeal to sectarian issues will divide us along sectarian lines, but an appeal to commonly held beliefs, values, et cetera, will enable us to unite behind a policy. And finally, we in the Missouri Synod can be a little clannish and stick to ourselves. Sometimes, we lack a vision of the common good versus what's good for us. And historically, this has been true. Missouri Synod folks were often in a German enclave and had nothing to say to other communities. They had their own schools, and therefore were not concerned with the public schools. We didn't feel that we could impose our values on the nation at large, so we kept to ourselves and opposed prayer in schools. That's what parochial schools were for. On the other hand, when the state began to outlaw parochial schools, then we got involved, because we had to advocate what was good for us. Sometimes, we still have that problem. If the whole community is--a whole community can share a very parochial outlook, and a politician can--many politicians have been elected from such communities. But Lutherans are not a majority and are not an ethnic majority the way they once were. And so we have to appeal outside our own ethnic community, and that requires a vision of the common good and not just what's good for us. So when I was campaigning for the State Board of Education, I supported school choice, and especially private school choice. I was not persuaded that vouchers would be either a possibility in Michigan or necessarily a good thing for parochial schools, because vouchers come with strings attached, and our schools could get hooked on the money and then have to compromise our principles because of that dependence on government money. I personally prefer the universal tuition tax credit, which the Mackinac Center in Michigan has proposed, and which is basically what is in operation in Arizona at current. This would seem to maximize freedom for our parochial schools. So I learned a lot from my run in 2008, and I didn't think I was going to do it again. But I gave it one more try in 2010. It was clear that there was a different political landscape. People in two years had gotten tired of President Obama and the Democrats in particular, and especially in Michigan, where the promises made, both on political, both an educational policy and economic policy, didn't pan out. And two of the Congressional District chairmen encouraged me to get in the race again. And since I enjoyed the process, I did make the decision later, about March, rather than in January, as I had the previous time. But I got out there, and I enjoyed certain advantages. I had some name recognition already. Many of the people I had met two years before and remembered me, remembered me on the ballot. So people who were concerned about this race in general remembered my name from the ballot. And having been nominated once before, I had some credibility to start with. A lot of politics is who you know, because they recommend you to who they know. And because I jumped in here and the other--and we had to nominate two people to the state board. The other person was that woman who had inspired me. Her name was Eileen Weiser. Her husband just had happened to be the chairman of the state party. She had lost her reelection bid back in 2006, but she made another run for it in 2010. And so it was great to have someone else that I deeply respected and could look to as a mentor. I resolved not to spend $3,000 this time around. So I basically traveled, met with groups, and I tried to rely on free media, or almost free media. I set up a Facebook page. I purchased some Facebook ads, which were quite reasonable. I had them run on people in Michigan who identified themselves as Republican. And I don't think I spent more than $30 to have these little ads appear on the Facebook pages of people who would be most likely to go to and vote in the Republican state convention. I collected email addresses of voters wherever I could and sent out periodical announcements where I was speaking, when I went on tour with other candidates, when I released a YouTube video. And one YouTube--I did, I meant to do this with my, when my college-age son was with me over the summer, but we never quite got to it. I finally got to it after the nomination and did that for the fall. I did one on school choice, which was about 10, 12 minutes long. It's still on YouTube. Dr. Z speaks on school choice. But that was too long. Most people won't watch YouTube for more than three or four minutes. And then the speech that I gave at the convention, acceptance speech at the convention, I recorded and put on YouTube, and that got over 1,000 hits or so. So that was a help. And I've given the YouTube address there for you on that one. Now, the state convention in August was very exciting. I knew I was going to give an acceptance speech. And being used to giving those object lessons for kids in the parochial schools that I've been principal of over the years, I prepared what I call the "out-of-the-box" speech. And I walked onstage, and the photo here is with us, with the box over my head. I said, "I will now address, since you've nominated me for the State Board of Education, I will now address as a typical state board member." And I put the box over my head, and I said, "See, they can't think outside the box." And on each side of the box, I had the ideas that, in my view, lock their thinking in: the idea that more policies is better, that government schools are best, that money is the solution, and so on. And I concluded the speech by, you know, "With your help, we'll break through this and introduce new ideas on the State Board of Education." And I busted the box. And it was a big hit at the convention and got me some free publicity. The photo that you see on the right appeared in the Detroit News website. And most people appreciated the humor, the combination of humor and substance that I was able to bring to that. It was a different year in 2010. The state party invested a lot more money in the other candidates. During the presidential year, they put all the money behind McCain at the top of the ticket. But this year, Rick Snyder was the governor, and he had a great lead. And the state party paid for us, other statewide candidates, to tour Michigan cities in the Nerd Mobile, as it was called, the bus that carried candidate Snyder around. And so this was a wonderful opportunity to, in three days, visit 15 cities in Michigan, both in August and again in November. It gives you something to email people about, publicity releases and that sort of thing. And even more important, I got to know the state Supreme Court justice. I even got to-- I even got to notarize an oath for him, along with Michigan's governor and Congressman David Camp, who was known that he would probably become the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. It was pretty heady stuff to talk with the ex-governor and the ex-chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee about means to help Detroit in its economic difficulties. And I spent a lot of time with Ruth Johnson, who became the secretary of state here in Michigan, as well as Bill Shute, who became the, was elected attorney general. So it was just a wonderful time. I really enjoyed this, but I could see where six months of it would make you pretty sick. And that's what most of the statewide candidates had to do in order to win their offices. Because mine was such an obscure coattail office, I could just ride their coattails on this particular election. All the things I did was to drop off signs and you saw the red sign earlier. This was in part because people who are, who care want to display your sign. Partly too, you can meet the workers at the various offices throughout the state. And once again, these are the people that work for you, pass your name on to other people who tell people that you're such a great guy. Other paraphernalia at the state convention, I had invested in some hand fans, such as they used to have in churches and funeral homes before the era of air conditioning. They're still good at picnics to keep flies off your chicken and stuff like that. So they were a big hit and ensured that I had name recognition and little something for people to share with their friends. In the fall, there were a number of joint appearances with other candidates for the State Board of Education. A lot of organizations invited us, but a lot of people wouldn't come. I came to a number where there was just myself and one Democrat and often a third-party person. And I had to come face-to-face with another area that is the temptation to misrepresent other people's positions. I argued that the state board had not passed any resolutions of substance. I still stand behind that, but the Democrat incumbent felt that I had misrepresented the board's work and her work in that. And that is an area of moral ambiguity, which, and you can see where crossing the line is, would be very easy. The line between representing, giving a fair representation of what your opponent says and misrepresenting it may be bringing out implications or assumptions that your opponent is not aware of, but that your audience needs to be aware of. My election turned out to be a cliffhanger. The Democratic incumbent was well-respected and especially was an advocate for special education. So there were a lot of special education folks that worked for her, as well as the Democrats in general and the teachers' unions. But fortunately, I was able to ride the wave. The city of Pontiac didn't get their votes in until Wednesday noon, the day after the election. And the papers wouldn't call my election until those votes had come in because I ended up winning by about 16,000 votes out of 4 million cast, which is less than half a percent. But a win is a win. And this office in Michigan is, the term is eight years. And so I'm set till retirement and I don't have to worry about running for, again, for eight years. It is an unbelievable dream, a great honor to be able to serve our state and to speak on behalf of our Lutheran schools and the great advantage that private education, the great contribution that private education makes to America's, educating America's children, particularly in urban areas. And so now there remains for me this, a great privilege of public service. You go, you actually go one meeting a month. So this is not unlike some legislative offices where it's a job. This is one day a month, you go to the state capitol in Lansing and go to a meeting. But you can spend as much time as you want visiting other schools and meetings, talking to people outside, gathering information and acquainting yourself with the issues and trying to persuade others to support policies for the good of Michigan's education establishment. There are some folks who do work at it every day with my responsibility for a parish and a school and such. I'm not able to do that, but it is a great privilege and an honor. And I have the good fortune of, although I'm one of three Democrats on a board of eight, I'm sorry, I'm one of three Republicans on a board with five Democrats. Several of the Democrats are reform-minded in the manner of waiting for Superman, if you've seen that movie. And our chairman, our new chairman is very talented at identifying common ground. And I've only served two meetings, but I've had quite a bit of influence on the decisions that the board has made. An unanticipated honor, I was elected Michigan's representative to the National Association of State Boards of Education. And I look forward to sharing a vision of the common good, which includes school choice and especially the private options of promoting values in public education, issues like sex education and in particular, dealing with how gays are portrayed, whether positive role models of gay people need to be provided for students in school or not is an issue that I will have a say on. And encouraging excellence at large, assuring Lutheran schools and their teachers that they are indeed a great contributor, not only to the kingdom of God, but to American society through their excellence and their alternate model of education. It's been a real privilege to be able to share my experience with you. And I want to encourage you, once again, I think the bottom line is to get involved, care enough to be informed on public policy. Go to some of those meetings where you meet candidates and help influence who is elected, who is nominated, who carries on and who does not. Because our, we, Christians are called to be salt, to preserve the world from corruption and to give a good flavor. And nowhere and at no time has that been needed more than in our present age.